Go to radio IQ dot org and thanks. Funding for here and now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And indeed, designed to be an end-to-end hiring solution to help businesses attract, interview, and hire candidates all from one place. Learn more at indeed.com/NPR.
It's Here and Now. The Emmys came back with gusto in a televised award ceremony last night, just like the old days before the pandemic. Among the big winners, Ted Lasso, Succession, and The White Lotus. For more on the winners and the losers and all the drama in between, we're joined by critic Glenn Weldon of NPR's Pop Culture Happy Hour. Glenn, great to have you.
Oh, thanks for having me.
So, the show returned to its pre-pandemic format, complete with comedian hosts, cheerful acceptance speeches. How did the production go?
Well, I mean, it was big chaos energy, but that's part of the deal, right? They understood the assignment. It was hosted by Kenan Thompson. He's very genial. They opened with this big, old-school production number where they danced to remixes of classic TV theme songs. Most of the Brady kids showed up for no readily discernible reason, but clearly the marching orders here were to keep it light, keep it frothy, avoid controversy, avoid politics, make it a party atmosphere. You seat everyone at tables, which is what they did last night. You give them plenty of booze, which is what they did last night, and then you proceed to inundate us with meaningless montages that eat up all kinds of time. It was a very old-school formula last night, Anthony. Felt a bit dated, I gotta say, but it's a formula for a reason, you know?
Okay, well, sounds like a party anyway. So Glenn, aside from the production itself, tell us about the standout moments and the big winners.
Well, I mean, sometimes it's hard to pick because one speech blends into the other, lots of lists of agents and managers, but that was not true last night. When the great and the good Cheryl Lee Ralph won Outstanding Supporting Actress in a Comedy for Abbott Elementary, there was this electric charge as she made her way to the stage very slowly, because she's a pro. She just planted herself in front of that mic and proceeded to blow the roof off the dump.
I am a woman. I am an artist and a noise. Where my voice belongs.
You perhaps see what I'm gonna get there? I mean, that's the first verse of Diane Reeves' song, "Endangered Species," and then she went on to deliver a barn burner of a speech.
To anyone who has ever, ever had a dream and thought your dream wasn't, wouldn't, couldn't come true, I am here to tell you that this is what believing looks like.
I mean, you see what I mean. Trust me, that was the best speech of the night, one of the best Emmy speeches in my memory, because Ralph has been out here, she's been putting in the work forever, she's done Broadway, she's been on TV for 30-plus years. This was her night.
That sounded like quite a moment, and it sounds like it was a big night for other black women as well.
Well, I mean, yeah, comparatively, because there have been recent years where we get a lot of nominations for black women, but not a lot of wins. But last night, Zendaya won as lead actress in a drama series for her role on Euphoria. She's won that before. Quinta Brunson, who created Abbott Elementary, won for Best Writing in a Comedy Series for that show. Now, there's an asterisk there because she had to share it with Jimmy Kimmel, who was doing a bit where he was lying at her feet as part of his own bit, and so she had to kind of literally step over him to give her speech. That wasn't a good look. And the singer Lizzo also gave another knockout acceptance speech when her show Watch Out for the Big Girls won Best Original Competition. That was an upset win over RuPaul's Drag Race. We should say that in her acceptance speech, she used some salty language.
When I was a little girl, all I wanted to see was me in the media, someone fat like me, black like me, beautiful like me. If I could go back and tell little Lizzo something, I'd be like, you gonna see that person, but bitch, it's gonna have to be you.
So Glenn, what were some of the other big surprises? What were the other surprises?
I mean, a big one was Squid Game. I mean, this is a blockbuster Netflix hit Korean show that won, I think, an unexpected level of recognition last night. So star Lee Jong-geuk won Best Actor in a Drama. He was the first Asian actor to win in that category. And the show's director and creator, Hoang Dong-hyuk, also won for his work, and he was very appreciative.
Since Squid Game got 14 nominations at the Emmys, people keep telling me like I made the history, but I don't think I made the history by myself, because it was you who opened up the door for Squid Game in videos here tonight at the Emmys. So I believe, I have to say, we made all history together.
So if Squid Game was the surprise, if you look at the other big awards, Best Comedy, Best Drama, we actually saw a lot of predictable picks, right?
Yeah, I mean, the Emmys tend to be slow to embrace the new. They tend to reward what they've already rewarded. And if you went in last night just counting nominations, which is kind of a smart thing to do, you'd expect that Ted Lasso would win for comedy, Succession would win for drama, and The White Lotus would win for limited series. That's exactly what happened. A lot of folks like me were pulling for Better Call Saul to finally get some recognition. It didn't last night, but they divided up that show's final season into two halves. The second half is going to be eligible next year. Now, if Ted Lasso and Succession...
I would like to introduce Pastor Eddie Crabtree from the Valley Word Church. I'm gonna ask the pastor to maybe tell us a little bit about his church and some of the things that he and his congregation are doing. Then after that, Pastor, you tell me when you're ready, and please join us in invocation. I'll ask everybody in the audience, if you want to join us, you may stand up and join us for the invocation. Pastor?
Thank you, sir. First, I'd like to say what an honor it is to be here and actually how blessed we are to reside, both our church and Debbie and I as individuals reside in Roanoke County and have so for the majority of our life. And we recognize the hard work that you guys put in concerning Roanoke County, and it's a great place to live, and we thank you for that.
Thank you.
So our pastor, Valley Word Church, we, I have been there for 27 and a half years now, and during that time, we've seen all the ups and downs, as we all have, and the church is doing really well. And we, one of our favorite things now is we've just partnered with a private Christian school who moved from Roanoke City to the county. And now our church is buzzing like a beehive with 230 students plus, I think they said 44 teachers. So, you know, it's awesome to see us come together, and a building that the Lord really gave us is now not just being used on Sundays and Wednesdays, but being used all week long. So it's just a real exciting thing for all of us here again, they're now in Roanoke County. So we appreciate that. So I'm ready.
If you want to join us and want to stand up for the invocation, please do. If not, you can remain sitting, and then after the invocation, I'd like to have you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, Father, we thank you for this opportunity to once again come together, talk about the things concerning the valley, but specifically Roanoke County. Father, it is such an honor and a privilege to be a part of this great community. Father, I ask that you give us all wisdom and direction concerning the running of the business of this county and the things that you have before us. Father, we thank you that this is a good and safe place to live and to work. And so we ask you, Father God, that your protection be upon all of us. May your presence be felt and seen, and may people talk about how wonderful it is to be a part of this county. Father, we thank you for this, the Board of Supervisors. We ask you, Father God, to minister life to them and through them. Father, we ask that protection be theirs, and Father, may they live in the best days of their life. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for September 13th, 2022. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesdays at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. Meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisor meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important that everyone speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisor meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. And then please turn off your cell phones or put them on silent. Thank you. Item A on our agenda, opening ceremonies, is roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. Norworth?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here. Item B on our agenda, requests to postpone or to change the order of agenda items. I would ask if there are any requests to postpone, add, or change the order of the agenda. I do want to announce that item C1 on our agenda, Nancy Gattone, hope I pronounced that correctly, she's unable to attend today's meeting, so item C1 will be moved to our consent agenda. Does any board member have any requests to change or postpone or add? Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, sir.
Mr. Lubek?
No changes, sir.
Thank you. As I said, item C1 has been moved to our consent agenda. Item C2 is a resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County to Darlene Smithwick, Public Services Librarian, upon her retirement after more than 21 years of service. Tony Cox, please come to the podium, and I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution.
Resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County to Darlene Smithwick, Public Services Librarian, upon her retirement after more than 21 years of service. Whereas Darlene Smithwick was employed by Roanoke County on June 13th, 2001, and whereas Ms. Smithwick retired on September 1st, 2022, after 21 years and three months of devoted, faithful, and expert service to Roanoke County. And whereas Ms., this is a tongue twister, Smithwick, through her employment with Roanoke County, has been instrumental in improving the quality of life and providing services to the citizens of Roanoke County. And whereas throughout Ms. Smithwick's tenure with Roanoke County, she has served the library in a variety of ways. She developed partnerships and programming for adults that benefited the library system. For many years, she served as webmaster and taught computer classes for the public, county employees, and businesses in Roanoke. She created social media accounts for the library and spoke at local civic groups, always advertising our upcoming events. Some of her most popular programs were Mystery Nights, Dead Authors Month, the Virginia Voices series, and Blind Date with a Book. Mrs. Smithwick's gift of listening to people's stories made her a natural at developing partnerships, including ones with Blue Ridge PBS, the DMV, and Voices of Faith. Her skill in providing outreach services brought us several little free libraries located in the Roanoke County Park System, and most recently, she started providing library services at the Catawba Valley Farmer's Market. In creating all of these connections, she leaves behind a well-connected community thanks to her love of public service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County expresses its deepest appreciation and the appreciation of the citizens of Roanoke County to Darlene Smithwick for more than 21 years of capable, loyal, and dedicated service to Roanoke County. And further, the Board of Supervisors does express its best wishes for a happy and productive retirement.
I would ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. We have a second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Ms. Cox, I think you have a few words.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I was Darlene's supervisor for several years, and it was amazing to see all the connections that she did make. She knows everybody. She even brought Peter Gross from Mutual of Omaha's Wild Kingdom to the old library on 419. That was a long time ago. She was in tune with what people were interested in, and she held a Downton Abbey tea party, which brought in 100 people on a cold January night. She had a World War II Veterans Program and filled the 200-seat auditorium at South County to capacity. She was always thinking of creative ways to get people to the library, and one of the last great connections that she'd made was the Catawba Farmer's Market. Because of her, we have so many partnerships and connections with the community, so it's a privilege to work with her.
Would you like to say a few things? You have the podium.
Well, I didn't plan to, but I just want to thank Tony for her kind words and thank the county. This was a great opportunity for me, and I loved working at the Roanoke County Public Library.
Thank you. Well, the county has a small gift for you.
Thank you.
And does any board member have any comments?
Just thank you for your service. We so appreciate it.
And I think Amy would like to take a photo.
He tried.
I don't want to block anyone. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a resolution expressing the appreciation, Board of Supervisors, to Robin Walters, Library Department Budget Specialist, upon her retirement after more than 44 years of service. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County to Robin Walters, Library Budget Specialist, on her retirement after more than 44 years of service. Whereas Robin Walters was employed by Roanoke County on July 31st, 1979, and whereas Ms. Walters retired on September 1st, 2022, after 44 years and one month of devoted, faithful, and expert service to Roanoke County. And whereas Ms. Walters, through her employment with Roanoke County, has been instrumental in improving the quality of life and providing services to the citizens of Roanoke County. And whereas throughout Ms. Walters' tenure with Roanoke County, she held several positions at the library, starting out as a page and quickly moving into a full-time position processing library cards. Her devotion to the library and excellent work ethic promoted her to Senior Library Assistant, responsible for ordering and purchasing library materials selected by the librarians and was instrumental in purchasing opening day collections for each of the new branch libraries. Mrs. Walters assisted with the materials budget and helped to compile statistics for the library. Ms. Walters most recently worked as Department Budget Specialist, providing excellent customer service to her coworkers and patrons. Mrs. Walters acted with grace and dedication in service to all those around her. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County expresses its deepest appreciation and appreciation of the citizens of Roanoke County to Robin Walters for more than 40 years of capable, loyal, and dedicated service to Roanoke County. And further, the Board of Supervisors does express its best wishes for a happy and productive retirement.
I would ask for a motion to approve the resolution. Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Ms. Cox, or is it, I have on my list here Sarah McKnight. Are both of you speaking? No, please. Tell me.
Well, I have prepared something.
Oh, good.
And then maybe Sarah can come up if she wants to. So for most of Robin's tenure, she was in charge of ordering all the supplies for the library, and she was on the phone with the vendors for a large part of her day. She had a great reputation with them, and they asked about her often. She was in charge of purchasing all the items that we needed to have programs for the public. On more than one occasion, we had an employee call her at the last minute in a panic because something had not yet arrived for the program. Robin went above and beyond to make sure that the staff member had the materials they needed in order for the program to happen. No matter how many mistakes people made with their orders or their time sheets, Robin was always so patient and gentle in making sure that things were done correctly. She truly cared about her work, and it showed.
Would you like to say a few words?
I enjoyed working for the county. It was a good 44 years, and I enjoyed it.
So it's a line there. I just want to thank Robin for everything that she's done for me, and she's been such a great support and helpful to all the new employees that have been coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from board members?
Yeah, I just, you know, working 40 years, 44 years for the same firm, company, whatever, that's a long time. Dedication, we really appreciate that, and, you know, numbers gotta add up, and I'm glad you were there.
I love the library system.
Yes, and that too. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, if we look at our agenda, we have three employees that we were going to recognize today. And if you look at the number of years of service, I think that says a lot for us and how good and great our library system is. What worries me is we're losing a lot of wonderful experience, and it's really hard to replace that kind of experience. But thank you for your service. We have a, county has a small gift for you.
Thank you.
And Amy would like to take a picture.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed that too. Between the three retirees, it's 105 years.
Yes, yes.
Luckily, they're not moving, so we can call them.
I bet you will. Next item on our agenda, item D is a briefing, a briefing to discuss, and I don't know if I can pronounce that, so I'll just call it PFAS with the Board of Supervisors. Mr. McAvoy or Scott Shirley, come on up, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, and county manager, and clerk. We appreciate the county's interest in this emerging topic. It's made the news recently, and we're happy to provide an update on what we're doing to protect the water resources.
Do they come up?
So specifically today, we're going to talk about the application of PFOS, is what we've come to call it, is kind of our shorthand, and how that is associated with spring hollow. So in today's presentation, we're going to cover what are PFOS compounds, testing results for Roanoke's water resources, what is HFPODA? So a lot of these are a mouthful, and that's often referred to as Gen X. What does EPA's recent health advisory mean? How should the public view that? And then what's next on our agenda and plan for addressing issues that we find in the Roanoke Valley? So PFOS is shorthand for polyfluoroalkyl compounds, and so these are compounds that are, consist of a carbon bond between carbon and fluorine, and so they're very commonly used chemical compounds. You'll kind of see on the list, they're present in everything from food wrappers, water stain-resistant coatings on our furniture, on our clothing, firefighting foams. So they're highly present in the environment. In fact, for some time, the CDC has been monitoring the blood levels of Americans, and it's one of those compounds that's so prevalent in the, in the environment that most Americans will show some concentration of these compounds in their bloodstream. So PFPA and PFOS are two of the most studied compounds and have been recognized for a bit longer in terms of environmental awareness and action by EPA. And so there's been far more research on those compounds over the years than virtually any other, any other elements of this class. But this is a very large class of chemicals, and so you have numerous compounds. Some, they're not of concern because they tend to not be mobile in the environment, or they do not accumulate or pose a threat. But then others in the class may, and emerging science indicate that they in fact may be harmful. So PFOS compounds in drinking water. So currently, EPA does not have a drinking water regulation for these compounds. So they, they have progressed, and there was a little bit of confusion on the recent action that that was a regulatory limit. That's not what was passed. So there is not currently a regulatory limit on, on these compounds. The health advisory will eventually evolve, is expected to evolve into a regulatory limit under the Safe Drinking Water Act. So in 2016, EPA, and this is a fairly rapidly evolving regulatory topic, a little faster than we typically see issues generated at the federal level, but in 2016, EPA took action and passed an initial health advisory specifically for PFPA and PFOS at 70 parts per trillion as a health advisory. And so that was the health advisory that most people paid attention to. That, that's what was viewed as, as kind of the standard for comparison of whether a water body had any problems at the time. As kind of a point on this, part per trillion is roughly one second in 32,000 years. So we're talking about, in our reports, we say it as nanograms per liter. So this is a very, very small portion of any water body when you're talking... So this is a very, very small portion of any water body when you're talking parts per trillion. And so that's confusing at times because it's just difficult to grasp numbers this low. In fact, there's only a handful of laboratories in the United States that can even test to this low for these compounds. So that, there is a growing list, but as of present, there's just a handful of laboratories that can do this work. So the lifetime health advisory, what's the intent of a health advisory? When EPA generates a health advisory, this is assuming a person lives a standard lifetime of seventy years, and then if they're exposed at this level over those seventy years from drinking two liters of water a day, which is really a large volume of water, they could be expected to have health impacts. And so that's an important distinction to understand when you're talking about regulatory limits. Is it a health advisory, or is it a regulatory limit? And so this, at this time, is a health advisory that we'll be discussing today. So as part of this, the authority, this effort to determine prevalence in the environment, the authority has sampled Carbon's Cove, Spring Hollow, Crystal Springs, and we found no PFOS compounds at any of the three, three facilities, except for one compound that was detected at Spring Hollow, and that is HFPODA, also called Gen X. So Virginia does not have a state standard for PFOS or any of these compounds at this point either. We, we have done research, and we looked when this was first detected. So Michigan has a, a limit, their regulatory limit for HFPODA was three hundred parts per trillion. And then North Carolina, right next door to us, had it, had a regulatory, had an advisory at a hundred forty parts per trillion. So we'll talk a little more specifically about what is HFPODA or Gen X. So Gen X or HFPODA is not an end product in and of itself. So typically on this product, it's used to manufacture other PFOS, PF-FOA, those compounds. It's used as part of the manufacturing process. It's generally not present, or expected to be present, in manufactured goods. There, there are potentially exceptions to that that are being researched. Florida did HDPE containers, and the ability of some materials to leach that out of the containers. So, so that's still ongoing research, but generally, it's not found except in instances where there's a direct connection to a manufacturing facility. And fluoropalymers are an important compound in our modern life, and so they're present in chip manufacturing, the automotive industry, production of hydrogen fuel cells. So they're used across, as I mentioned earlier, a myriad of products that the public uses every day. So the properties of these particular class chemicals include water resistance, oil resistance, heat resistance, and so periodically you'll hear them called, as they've been referenced in some of the stories, the forever chemical. And it's partly because they are so resistant that they're also popular and important in a lot of consumer goods. HFPODA was actually a replacement for PF-FOA, which was an earlier. So these compounds have been around since the nineteen forties, and so PF-FOA was recognized as having some health risk. And so the manufacturers had begun a process to research and formulate a replacement for this particular compound that's used in the process. And so Gen X became that replacement, or HFPODA, and it was assumed to be a safer alternative because they had evidence that it does not bioaccumulate. But EPA has studied this. It is presented in a couple of communities in the United States. And they're studying this primarily because it is mobile in the environment, it does persist in the environment, and now there's beginning to be some evidence that it has adverse impacts on liver and kidney function. And so obviously with, with those type red flags in the data, it requires additional study and additional work, which is ongoing. So the good news, there's a limited number of manufacturers around the country that actually produce or handle this material, and so the, the universe of potential sources for it are relatively small. So talk a little bit more about the testing at Spring Hollow that's been completed. And so the General Assembly did request that VDH consider this issue in the Commonwealth as it began to, to gain awareness nationally. And so VDH conducted a study, sampling study, where they went out and looked at some of the largest water utility sources in the Commonwealth, to just try to understand and help quantify whether the Commonwealth had a significant issue with these compounds. So the sampling, as I mentioned earlier, it looked at all, a broad class of these chemicals. The only constituent of this class that was found was the HFPODA at Spring Hollow. We did, again, did not have any hits or results for any compounds at Carbon's Cove or, or Crystal Springs. So this is a chart that shows the current results at, at finished water testing at Spring Hollow. So in January twenty-twenty, we had our first result, and so it was sixty-one parts per trillion. And so in context, during that time period, the Public Health Advisory for, and it did not include HFPODA, it included the other compounds that were recognized earlier, was seventy parts per trillion. So the only point of comparison we had at that point was the, the state of Michigan and North Carolina at three hundred and a hundred forty parts per trillion. So with that result and our awareness that the compound may be present, we proceeded with additional sampling. You can see it escalates over time. We began to trend, look at, because this sample is so prevalent in the environment, it requires highly specific instructions to sampling staff to make sure that we don't unintentionally contaminate a sample. So you have to work through that whole process to ensure that the employee didn't use personal care products right before sampling, that they, very careful on the clothing. I know our staff have been removing their shoes. Shoes can be a source. And so it's, it's just that sensitive of a test that we had to go through kind of the internal process to make sure and understand, was there anything wrong within our testing procedure that could generate this? So we were doing that work through this time period. So you can see the results were persistent though, and so we were using the same sampling protocols, but Teflon tubing, all those things we, we had to work through and evaluate. I am pleased to note, as of July, and we'll talk a little bit more about why, so you see the trend down for the most part, a couple extraneous increases, but in July, we have substantially increased testing. And so the, the last result on this slide was the fifteen, but I will share that recently we, we actually saw non-detect in finished water from some of the things we're doing, and I'll talk a little bit about that. And I should reference, so as soon as we became aware of this particular issue, we have had for some time information published on the authority website for consumers to be able and, and be aware of this. And then while not required by the Commonwealth, we did make a decision to go ahead and modify our Consumer Confidence Report that's published annually and goes out to our customers, to make customers aware that this particular issue has been identified. So what changed to kind of drive some of the recent interest? Well, in June of this year, EPA announced a new health advisory, and so not only for the compounds that they had previously recognized and had an existing health advisory at seventy parts per trillion, but then also they included new compounds, one of which is HFPODA, the particular compound that, that we're discussing today. So the old health advisory, as I mentioned, it was seventy parts per trillion, but there was no limit applied to HFPODA, and so it was not recognized at the federal level. The new health advisory that was issued in June of this year established a limit of ten parts per trillion per HFPODA. So these were fairly drastic reductions, and frankly, even a little bit lower than what was expected based on some of the science. There are other federal agencies that are tasked with looking at advisories with the CDC, and so these, there was a little bit of difference in, in some of the numbers from those agencies versus EPA's. So EPA also, they did recommend actions that utilities could take. This is a new emerging contaminant, and so there's limited options in terms of treatment, courses of action utilities can take. Thankfully, Roanoke County years ago, when Spring Hollow was built, made one really good choice that's, that's serving us well in addressing this, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. The one thing that is important to note that EPA did not recommend is the use of bottled water. And so we have had some comments, some questions about that. And so if the water itself has not been sampled for this, and that's not required for bottled water, that's not a recommendation by EPA at this point. So prior to June, we drastically increased our sampling events to try to understand and begin process of identifying source. We've done tons and tons of research on the chemistry of this particular compound, the processes that may be generated from it. We've kind of looked at everything. It's like any environmental issue, determining where it comes from can be a challenge. But we also initiated, and what I mentioned earlier, so the county installed granular activated carbon as one of the original process at Spring Hollow. And so that was originally installed to deal with total organic carbons. And so that's an organic, and that helps, helps remove organics from the water so that you decrease the risk of chlorination byproducts. And so that was installed and present, and that is one of the two recognized technologies that's available to treat for this compound. Now, it's a different process, different contact time, so we're in the, in the efforts of optimizing that system currently. So we began a process, we replaced the GAC filter media, actually began some modifications of the existing system to get it ready for treatment, and then we have requested funding assistance from VDH. So next steps for us, we plan to continue sampling and reporting to the public, so this will continue to be updated on our webpage. As I mentioned earlier, we had a recent result from the, the study that's ongoing at Spring Hollow of non-detect. That's, that's just tremendous to be at this point of awareness and already be at a point where we're fairly confident that our treatment options are going to be good to address this. So we're partnering with DEQ currently on a detailed plan for sampling the watershed to identify source. We have had one test result that showed presence in the Roanoke River. I think that was referenced recently in some of the news coverage. So prior to that, we had had numerous test results that were non-detect, so it was not present in the river, but we have one result where it was detected. And so at a substantially higher, more than twice as high as the reservoir, it was a hundred thirty-nine parts per trillion. And so with that, we're looking at a more detailed plan to go up in the watershed and do additional sampling to try to identify source. And that will be DEQ's responsibility for source control. So VDH has also signaled it will provide assistance and funding for GAC treatability study. They did award the authority a grant to complete a study. That study's currently underway, and one of the benefits of this, there's not many utilities that are this far along in dealing with the compound, and so we will provide those results to other utilities so that can help them inform their treatment choices and decisions going forward. So we will have to make some infrastructure improvements at Spring Hollow. As I mentioned, the original intent of the GAC was placed for another treatment reason, and in order to make use of it fully and efficiently for this particular compound, it's going to require us to make some, some process changes so that that's optimized. This will entail more frequent exchanges of the carbon media than what you would be expected to do under a TOC treatment protocol. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or...
Questions? Dave, the chairman?
Yeah. I'm interested, so in one of the emails I read, you really haven't traced the source where it might be coming from. You just mentioned some possibly, and we're talking about the HFPO-DA. So if the, if the main source of Spring Hollow is Roanoke River, I, I would be interested to know if Salem is picking it up downstream in their facility. Have y'all talked with them?
So anytime that we get a positive result of anything, test-wise, so, so immediately when, when we received the hundred thirty-nine part per trillion result, we send that to the city of Salem for their awareness.
Right.
We have regularly communicated with the city of Salem, they're interested in this issue. Their intake has been sampled, but as I mentioned, we had a whole body of testing that showed it was not present in the river, which was creating some consternation in terms of the investigation because so often we'd see a non-detect in the river. And so that actually led us, atmospheric deposition is a risk for this particular compound, and so we have initiated atmospheric testing at the reservoir. The first one has been sent off to laboratory, that's a thirty-day testing on atmospheric deposition, is you basically expose the water to atmosphere. And so we'll have the first results back. I, I think that's less likely now because of the result that we found in the river. And so the question we now have is, is it an intermittent discharge? What's the source of the discharge? We're making good progress with DEQ. We're actually, the state authorized twenty sampling events, and these are very expensive tests at this point. These tests are quite expensive. So the state's authorized twenty tests. We have a substantial budget for our own testing, so we're working with DEQ to optimize that sampling schedule so we can get out and begin to narrow it down. Our concentration now is North Fork, South Fork. And so once we know North Fork, South Fork, if we can see a result there, that just helps us back up the tracing until we get to the source.
So follow-up question. So the, the new filter you're talking about, did that contribute to where it was undetectable? Does that have any bearing on it?
Yes, sir. So this, the, the actual result is post-treatment.
Okay.
So these are post-treatment results. So it's gone through the GAC, it's still present in the reservoir, in that range of likely thirty to forty parts per trillion. So comes into the process, goes through treatment with the GAC, the renewed media, we were able to achieve a non-detect. And that's our hope, is once we get it fully optimized, that that's just going to be a consistent result, and, and we'll be removing the compound.
So what's your timetable for replacing that filter system?
So the media is completely replaced.
Okay.
And while it's, there are piping changes that make it less than ideal for this use, but our staff, that's one of the things we're working through, the correct procedures we brought in. We have some expertise from the university, or from North Carolina State University. Dr. Detlef Knappi is part of our team. He's had a lot of experience in this North Carolina, so we're working through a full study to look at how to optimize our treatment practices so that this is a consistent result.
Okay.
Mr. Norwood?
Yeah. Good presentation, appreciate the update. It was kind of timely because a citizen called me the other day about another subject, and while on the phone, mentioned a, some research being done at Northwestern University regarding forever chemicals. I don't know if that could help in y'all's search to improve things, but I've shared that with Mr. Kaywood, and I think he passed it on to Mr. McAvoy. So for whatever it's worth, you know, read it and see if it can help you, because I know she was concerned enough that she, she did her own research and shared it with me, so.
Those are all helpful. We're reading a lot of research papers, have been for some time. Actually, we're working with the University of North Carolina currently. They have invented a sensor that can detect this compound. It's not commercially produced, but we're hopeful to be able to be a pilot location where it would give us an opportunity to, to then actively monitor the river for the presence.
Thank you. Couple of questions. Having spent too many years of my life dealing with Dixie Caverns and EPA and DEQ, is PFAS or the Gen X, is it soluble in water, or is it heavy, like the heavy metals that would sink down to? I remember like with Dixie Caverns and the heavy metals and the lead, it was down more in the sediment, in the, in the creeks and the rivers, and we had to do the cleanup there. So with this, is it more soluble in water, or does it, because of its heaviness, sink and collect maybe in the sediment?
Good question. It's such a broad chemical class. Most of the compounds of concern, particularly HFPODA, actually tend to be in... Most of the compounds of concern, particularly HFPO-DA, actually tend to be in liquid column. They don't have as much affinity for the solids. In fact, one of the treatment technologies that's currently being researched uses air. It's kind of akin to a surfactant, and so it's using air to try to bring it up and concentrate it in the top of column. There are other chemicals in this class that may have more affinity for solids. It's just a very large chemical class. And so I think it's going to be interesting to watch as this evolves into discussions about how we address in landfills, wastewater plants, water facilities, to understand the potential routes of exposure.
Okay. At the beginning of your briefing, you had indicated the EPA advisory was based on average lifespan of 70 years, and you were saying two liters. So in other words, I'd have to drink two liters of water every day for my life for 70 years before this might cause a problem. Is that accurate?
I, yes, yes. Pretty much, and putting it in, in simple to explain terms, correct is, is over 70 years, if you drank it, now not every part of the population would potentially have a problem, but it's because they're looking at the most sensitive individuals within the population. So who would be most impacted?
So and typically where, yes, I turn on the faucet and I drink water, that's one thing, water that comes from Spring Hollow. Do we know, does the science know, if I treat the water, when I say treat it, I boil water to make coffee or tea, or I'm boiling water and I put the pasta in it, I mean, do we know, does boiling or pasteurization or any other routine typical food preparation process that utilizes water, does that, does that process eliminate it or dissipate it or change it?
The only two recognized, it actually requires very high temperatures to destroy these compounds. So the two recognized technologies that are available are reverse osmosis and granular activated carbon. And so when you look at North Carolina, North Carolina, the Cape Fear Utilities and Brunswick County Utilities are dealing with this at magnitude higher than the numbers we're talking about. And so Cape Fear is going with granular activated carbon, and then Brunswick County has actually initiated a project at $129 million to put in reverse osmosis. And so that's the two recognized. Now, there are other technologies in development to improve treatability and give us more options, but they're in pilot at best. They're either in lab work or pilot, so we've got some time before any other technology is known.
Final question. I know we're focusing on Spring Hollow, but I'm also concerned about well water. And typically, those citizens who have wells, they have their well water, maybe, maybe they send it off to a lab once every couple of years, a lot of times probably don't. But what I'm understanding from you is, to detect this, it doesn't fall within the routine typical, if I sent a, if I had well water and I sent it off to a lab and I got the results, that lab analysis doesn't even come close to identifying these. So theoretically, I could be getting it out of well water, it's just that the testing is not sophisticated enough and much more expensive from what you were indicating that would even reflect that.
That's correct. And actually, the majority of cases have been studied, there have been substantial impact well systems. And so in a number of cases where the source has been identified, the normal solution has been to migrate those citizens off of wells onto the public water supply if available or complete extensions of the public water supply to basically replace those wells. And so the one challenge I think that's going to exist is, I mentioned how stringent we have to be on the sampling process. Well, that would apply to citizens too, because you don't want to self-contaminate a sample unintentionally.
Thank you.
Just real quick. I read something that said that this contaminant may have even been airborne and settled on Spring Hollow, so do you want to speak to that?
Sure, that, as I mentioned earlier, because we were, for just about a year, we saw non-detects in the Roanoke River. DEQ had completed some initial sampling events, and so it was not found in the river. So that led to the question that if we have these test results accumulating that it's not in the river, could there be a potential atmospheric path? So we have initiated atmospheric sampling. However, I would again say that with the result that we saw in the river of 139 parts per trillion, that now makes it more likely that it's a water route as opposed to any atmospheric issues.
And just one more quick question, and I was relieved that there wasn't any bottled water recommendation, but what's interesting about that is bottled water could even have some of those same contaminants, because that would not routinely be tested for these types of issues.
That's correct. It does not have a standard applied to bottled water. Bottled water has far less stringent standards than what we're subject to on a daily basis.
Work comes from the plastic.
I know. Thank you.
If you should just check that.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is an excellent briefing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, item E1, new business. Item E1 is a resolution requesting the U.S. Department of Transportation fund an action plan grant to develop a comprehensive safety action plan for Roanoke County, Bodatack County, and the town of Vinson as part of Safe Streets and Roads for All Discretionary Grant Program. Ms. Cronice.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The bipartisan infrastructure law established the SS4A, or Safe Streets and Roads for All Discretionary Grant Program, to fund initiatives to prevent roadway deaths and serious injuries. The U.S. Department of Transportation has appropriated $5 billion for this program over the next five years. The first round of funding for fiscal year 2022 consists of up to $1 billion and has been split between planning and implementation grants. The Safe Streets for All Program provides 80% federal funding for a 20% local match. Applicants must first have an eligible safety action plan in place in order to apply for implementation grants in subsequent grant rounds. Staff are requesting an action plan grant for development of a comprehensive safety action plan in partnership with the town of Vinson and Bodatack County. Applications are due on September 15th. The Bodatack County Board of Supervisors and the town of Vinson Town Council have both approved resolutions of support and match commitments within the last few weeks. The 20% match is proposed to be split according to locality population. Roanoke County's portion of the match would not exceed $51,000 and will be submitted as a fiscal year 2024 capital improvement program request. Staff recommends approval of the resolution of support, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
No, just a comment, Mr. Chair. I'm glad to see that we're going after this. It was mentioned the other day, a billion dollars a year for the next five years on a infrastructure call I was on with transportation and NACO, so congratulations on using some of that money coming from the folks north of us.
We hope that we will receive funding, fingers crossed, but it's a big carrot there dangling.
I think it's smart to go with a regional approach on it as well, so good luck.
Ms. Radford.
Yeah. Just for the laypeople to understand this, what concrete things will you see out of a safety action plan?
Well, there are a number of factors that are included in the parameters for a grant application. What they're really looking at is how to address, or where are the fatal and serious injury crashes, and how do you propose to address those? And one of the things is looking towards a zero deaths policy. So there's a number of factors we would include in that study, and we have a rough outline created, but until we have funding to be able to start an actual action plan, we don't have that defined very carefully yet.
So we don't, so other, I guess other localities have concrete things that they've put in place to improve safety? That's what I'm.
Yes, they have. And this would require that we do the same sorts of steps to qualify as a safety action plan.
Okay.
And then once we have the plan in place, we can apply for funding to actually implement the top project. And that's our thought, and that's one of the things we want to include in our study is basically a smart scale style concept plan and estimate for our top project so that we're ready to go for the implementation grant application as soon as that next round would be available.
Okay, so are guardrails like part of a safety action plan?
It could be something like that, yes. But a lot of it is starting and looking at existing conditions, like we do with any of our plans, to see where the crash is occurring, why are they occurring, what sorts of populations are involved? Is it cars? Is it pedestrians? Is it bicyclists? You know, what's happening and why is it happening so we can start to figure out a plan to address those fatalities and serious injuries? A lot of them frankly are on Interstate 81 as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Which makes it additionally challenging.
Ms. Cronice, assuming that everything works perfectly, and we know it will.
It's the federal government.
Could you give us a rough timeline? I know in the agenda report, you know, we're looking at maybe putting in the county's portion of the matching dollars for the 2024 CIP, but could you walk us through and give us a rough idea of what sort of timeline is involved in this?
Sure, as best I can. This program was put together very, very recently. There was also a substantial change to the notice of funding opportunity in August when it was announced in May. So we're trying to keep up with the changes and figure out what they, what the parameters are. So what we did find is that they're going to be notifying applicants of awards around the end of this year, beginning of next year. But they also have 12 months in order to, I think, we have 12 months to obligate those funds. So finding out that you've been awarded funding is one thing, getting the notification and being able to start work on the project is another, once we have agreement signed and things. And we know that, I mean, with the state, the experience we have with the state is it usually takes a little while to be able to get ready to start spending that money. So we anticipate, you know, a year timeframe would be fairly quick for a safety action plan. So we would love to be able to take advantage of the grant round that would open summer of 2023, but I don't think that will be possible if they're not making award announcements until the end of this year. So likely it would be 2024 before we would be ready with a plan and an implementation project to be able to submit. So perhaps this time 2024 is, I believe, realistic, but again, we don't, we don't have a lot of details on this program.
But as I understand it, we're looking at 1 billion a year for five years.
Yes.
So you might be unsuccessful in year one, but you'd be successful in year two and still accomplish a positive goal.
Well, and I was also curious to see that this is fiscal year 2022 federal funding that they're looking to award. So it's like they're already late in getting started. So I think we'll, we'll do the best we can with the tools we have available and hopefully be awarded funding to put together a plan within a year with consultant assistance, and then submit an implementation grant application as quickly as we can, hopefully 2024. It may be later. I guess if they start in '22, we've got until '27, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I would seek a motion to adopt the resolution for E1.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt E1. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Noorth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item F1 is first reading of ordinances, an ordinance amending Chapter 5, Animals and Fowl, Article 2, Dogs, Cats, and Other Animals, Section 5-27, Barking or Howling Dogs, and 5-34, Penalties of the Code of Roanoke County. Mr. Lubek.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. And as reviewed with the board in a recent work session, the Supreme Court of Virginia in the 2009 case of Tanner versus the City of Virginia Beach ruled that penal ordinances must contain ascertainable standards and that violations must not be determined by police officers on a subjective basis. In reviewing the provisions of the Roanoke County Code, it is clear that Section 5-27, which prohibits excessive barking by dogs, presently does not comply with the Tanner ruling. It does not set forth objective standards for such violations. So before you today is a revised ordinance that does set forth objective standards. It is patterned after similar ordinances that have been adopted by several other Virginia localities, and I would like to briefly highlight the main provisions of the ordinance. As drafted it, it states in subsection A of the revised ordinance that the harboring or keeping of any dog that causes any sound or noise such that it is plainly audible at least once a minute for 10 consecutive minutes, one, inside the confines of the dwelling unit, house, or apartment of another, or, two, at 50 or more feet from the animal, is hereby declared to be a public nuisance and shall be unlawful. Now, the code amendments continue, and it is unique in that these code amendments contain a request, which I would also like to read. In subsection C, it states, "It is requested upon the first instance that a specific dog creates a public nuisance, as set forth in subsection A above, that the affected citizens first contact the dog's keeper prior to contacting the county police department to attempt to resolve objections with the keeper." And I understand that there will be many instances where concerns with barking dogs can be resolved congenially between neighbors without the need to involve law enforcement. However, we expect that there may be unfortunate situations in which neighbors will not be neighborly, and in such situations, a request by an affected neighbor to control a barking dog may be received poorly by the dog's keeper. Through prior interactions, an affected citizen may know the disposition of the dog's keeper and may deem it wise to involve law enforcement from the beginning, and that is why this is included as a request and not a requirement. That being said, it may be necessary and appropriate for our law enforcement officers to involve the affected owners as witnesses in legal proceedings if charges are brought against the dog's keeper. Now, in addition to setting forth these objective standards for barking dogs, it is also proposed that Section 534 of the county code be amended, which sets forth the penalties for violations of Section 527 and other sections as well for animal nuisances. Section 534 has not been updated for about 16 years. So it is proposed that for a first offense, the penalty will be a fine of not less than $75, nor more than $150. For a second event, second offense within a consecutive 12-month period, the penalty would be a fine of not less than $150 and not more than $250. And for a third and all subsequent offenses, a fine of not less than $250 and not more than $350. I do recommend that the board approve the first reading, set this matter for a second reading in a public hearing on September 28th, and of course, would be happy to answer any questions that you might have today.
Any questions, Mr. Lubek? Mr. Radford.
Mr. Lubek, thank you for bringing up, I think it's 5-27C, it is requested, and we had talked about that in our work session, that some citizens have already tried contacting their neighbors and they're not welcoming that cordial suggestion, but I'm glad we changed that and that allow them, if they've already done the first instance, then they can go straight to the county. But I thought also it was interesting to understand that if you recorded the animal for 10 minutes, that would also suffice as evidence to the, to the community service officer, so.
Yes, sir. And on both of those points, even on the first instance, as this is phrased as a request, that there may be instances where an affected owner just simply feels uncomfortable contacting their neighbor to try to resolve it. So it's not a requirement, it's just, it's a suggestion, hoping that neighbors will be neighborly and that they can solve these problems without calling the police on each other, which we can expect will hopefully resolve in many instances. And on the second point that you made, yes, I think citizens will be a key part in collecting evidence. Otherwise, it would put the burden on our animal control officers or police officers to be there and to wait and to record and to be there for the entire 10 minutes while this is happening, while the citizen who is there and experiencing it can record it at that moment. It may be the case that the citizen records the dog barking for quite some time, and by the time the officer gets there, the dog is quiet. So yes, we do expect that this is an instance that does require citizen cooperation and will continue to do so.
No other questions? I would welcome a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance and to schedule a public hearing and second reading for September 28, '22. And I want to remind everyone and any citizens who are watching, our normal board meeting would be the 27th, Tuesday, the 27th. At our last meeting, we rescheduled that. At our last meeting, we rescheduled that meeting to Wednesday, the 28th. And so I just want to alert everyone that our board meeting, the public hearing on this matter, as well as several other matters, will be held on Wednesday, September 28th. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve F1.
A nice second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item F2. F2 is an ordinance amending Chapter 13, Offenses Miscellaneous, Article 1, in general, Section 13-5.5, Urban Archery Hunting Season, Roanoke County Code. Ms. Lowery.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Today I'm bringing to you a proposed ordinance to amend, as you said, the urban archery hunting section of the Roanoke County Code. Section 13-5.5 of the county code makes it unlawful for any person while hunting deer during the county's archery season to violate a number of county restrictions. Section 13-5.54 includes definitions for bows and arrows that may be used while archery hunting in Roanoke County. In this section, a bow includes all compound bows, crossbows, longbows, and recurve bows that have a peak draw of less than 10 pounds, or that are designed or intended to be used principally as toys. The state code defines bow as those bows having a peak draw weight of 10 pounds or more. The county code seems to have meant to mirror the state code, but instead erroneously allows hunting with toy bows instead of prohibiting such. It is recommended that the county code be amended in order for the county's definition of bow to be identical to the definition included in the state code. It is also recommended that the county code be amended in order to reflect the change in the Virginia State Regulatory Agency for Urban Archery Hunting, namely from the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries to the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources. There's no fiscal impact associated with this recommended amendment to the county code, and staff certainly recommends that the board approve this proposed amendment.
Any questions for Ms. Lowery? If not, I would welcome a motion to approve first reading of this ordinance and schedule our public hearing and second reading for September 28, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you. Item F3, ordinance accepting and appropriating transportation alternative set aside program grant funds from the, from the Virginia Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2023 and 2024 in the amount of $651,375 for the Glade Creek Greenway through Vineyard Park West in the Vinton Magisterial District and in the town of Vinton. Ms. Cronis.
Thank you very much. The Glade Creek Greenway is identified in the 2018 Roanoke Valley Greenway Plan, which was adopted by the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors in September 2018. The town of Vinton has constructed two segments of the greenway, and a third segment is funded in in design. The town has conceptually scoped a greenway alignment, Phase 3, that will connect the constructed segment to the proposed Vineyard Park West segment, which we call Phase 4. The town has obtained Surface Transportation Block Grant Funding to conduct an engineering study for this Phase 3 piece. The proposed half-mile asphalt Glade Creek Greenway segment in Vineyard Park West, located in both Roanoke County and the town of Vinton, will continue to extend the greenway east towards Vineyard Park East and residential neighborhoods in the city of Roanoke and Roanoke County. These neighborhood connections will enable residents to walk from their homes along the Glade Creek Greenway to the Tinker Creek Greenway and to the Roanoke River Greenway. Roanoke County Planning, Development Services, and Parks, Recreation, and Tourism staff have collaborated with the town of Vinton and the Virginia Department of Transportation staff on the design of the Glade Creek Greenway through Vineyard Park West. The alignment is intended to avoid existing sports fields, preserve existing access points to Glade Creek, provide an appropriate terminus on the western edge of the park for the town of Vinton's Phase 3 greenway connection, and meet VDOT design requirements. The Board of Supervisors held a public hearing and adopted a resolution supporting the project at its September 21st, 2021 meeting. The Commonwealth Transportation Board adopted the Six-Year Improvement Program on June 21st, 2022, which included TA program funding. This program provides 80% federal funding for a 20% local match. VDOT administers the TA program, and Roanoke County will administer the greenway project. The total amount to be accepted and appropriated is $651,375, which includes $130,275 in local match and $521,100 in federal funding. Required local match was appropriated in the fiscal year 2023 adopted capital improvement program. Staff recommends approval of the first reading of the ordinance and requests scheduling of the second reading for September 28, 2022, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. It is scary in a way that to do one half mile, it costs that much money. Very depressing. Item G in our agenda is second reading of ordinances. Item G1, G1 is an ordinance of Board of Supervisors, County of Roanoke, Virginia approving the lease financing of various capital projects for the county and authorizing the leasing of certain county-owned property, the execution and delivery of a prime lease, and a local lease acquisition agreement and finance lease and other related actions.
Ms. Gerhardt.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is the second reading of the ordinance to authorize the issuance of lease revenue bonds for the fiscal year 22, 23 capital projects as detailed in the approved fiscal year 2232 capital improvement program. Police revenue bonds will provide funding primarily for the construction of the new Bon Sec Fire Station, construction of Phase 2 of the Public Service Center, which includes new offices for Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Administration, and north and east Parks and Rec Tourism shops, along with renovations to an existing storage warehouse. It will also include funding to install telecommunication conduit and reconstruct a portion of road at Explorer Park to improve cell phone and data service, and open up the eastern end of the park for primitive camping and easier access to the Roanoke River. The proposed structure of the bonds are lease revenue bonds through the Virginia Resources Authority in the amount of up to $13 million of bonds, a true interest cost not to exceed 6%, with a term maturity not to exceed 20 years. This is an estimate of the maximum borrowing authority that the county may need. The amount of the bonds of the county issues will depend on interest rate conditions in the marketplace at the time of the bond sale. The bond issues in the amount not to exceed of approximately $13 million will allow the county to stay well within its limits of the county debt policy approved by the board. So staff recommends approval of the ordinance.
Any questions, Ms. Gerhardt? If not, I would welcome a motion to approve and adopt this ordinance at second reading.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt G1.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item G2 is an ordinance accepting and appropriating funds in the amount of $102,200 for fiscal year 2023 for shuttle service to the National Park Services, McAfee, Knob, Trailhead Parking Lot, Gataba Magisterial District. Ms. Cronis.
Good afternoon again. I'm happy to talk about this item, but there are no changes since the first reading. So if you'd like me to talk about it, I'm happy to do so.
Any questions?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Make a motion.
What a great day. The shuttle ribbon cutting was awesome. I've already had a lot of favorable commentary with that. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you. Item G3 is an ordinance authorizing the approval of a new variable width drainage easement to the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County, Virginia, on property owned by Jennifer Lynn Fowler and Vivian Budge Rierson III, located at Zero Doherty Road, Salem, Virginia, for the purpose of drainage improvements, Gataba Magisterial District. And I'm not going to read the tax map number.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have no changes. We recommend that the board accept the easement and approve this ordinance. I'd be glad to address any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman, this is in my district, and I would like to make a motion to approve.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item G4 is an ordinance accepting and appropriating funds in the amount of $559,520 from the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation, Public Transportation for the Cortran program. Ms. Benke.
Hello. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. This is the second reading, and there have been no changes, so staff does recommend the approval of the ordinance. And if you have any questions, happy to answer.
No questions? I welcome a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve number four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you. This is great news. This is a great program, and I'm glad that staff, Ms. Paula Benke, were able to be successful in their grant application. Item H is public hearings and second reading of ordinances. Item H1 is an ordinance amending Section 13-4 of the Roanoke County Code, clarifying and confirming the authority of the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources to issue certain permits for the taking of wildlife in Roanoke County. Mr. Lubek.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. There have been no changes since the first reading of this ordinance, and if there are no questions, I recommend that the board receive any public comments through a public hearing and that the board thereafter consider adopting this ordinance.
Any questions for Mr. Lubek? If not, I would like to open the public hearing. If we have any speakers who want to speak at this public hearing, just want to let you know, we would ask you to give your name and address and do it at the podium. You have three minutes to speak. I have no requests. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests? Anyone in the audience would like to speak to this item? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I would now ask for a motion to adopt this ordinance at second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item I is appointments. Does any board member have an appointment that has not been otherwise given previously to the clerk? If not, we'll go to item J. Item J is our consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? If not, I'd want to remind the board that we did add to our consent agenda item C1, which is the resolution expressing appreciation of the board on the retirement of Nancy Gattoni, Senior Library Assistant, on her retirement. She was unable to come today. So we have six items on our consent agenda. I would move the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item K, citizen comments and communications. This item on our agenda, we provide an opportunity for citizens to speak to us on matters of county concern. I have no requests. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir, I do not.
Item L. Item L is reports. I would move that we receive and file all the reports that are listed in our agenda. Do we have a second?
Second. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Item M, reports and inquiries of board members. First up, Mr. North.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few comments today. I want to thank the fire and rescue team, the police department, and the Department of Environmental Quality for all their efforts regarding the overturned tanker in Hollins this past week. I'm glad that no one was seriously hurt, although I understand the truck driver had a few broken bones. Something like this occurring at a, at a later hour could have been more devastating to the community. And I would also like to ask staff to look into where we stand on improvement of that intersection with VDOT. I think it was a long-term item, and report back to the board at the request of several citizens and my curiosity. Next, I happened to listen this morning to the Appropriations Committee in Richmond. They held a update on numerous reports. They had some good news for the month of August. The sales and use tax is up 7.2%. General fund revenues are up 5.4%. Virginia, though, is 2.6% below the pre-pandemic level in comparison to our sister states in recovery. Secretary Cummings, Finance Director, indicated that JP Morgan, according to his contacts, predicts a soft landing with strength of jobs leading the way. So that's a good sign as we look down towards the end of the year, first of the year. The governor will be presenting his budget December 15th in Richmond. Next, Greg Burns, who was the Tax Commissioner, spoke and indicated that taxpayers who filed electronically can expect their $250 single or $500 joint return refunds to be made between now and October 17th. And so that's some good news. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, and by the way, the one, the reason I listened at this, listened at this call was I heard updates on everything, Ezra Grants, everything, but not a word on education, construction grants. I found that to be most interesting. It's almost as if this fell off the radar screen, and I certainly can only conclude without asking the question, are they still developing the criteria and the parameters? That's the only thing I can figure why they didn't make a report on that. So maybe they will next month when they have their November or October meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Radford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to report a few things. Last week, I attended the visit, Virginia Blue Ridge, their annual meeting event down at Roanoke City Market, along with Mr. Mahoney and Ms. Hooker. We got to see a lot of the, the 2024 women's cycling that's getting ready for, for Paris. And they were, they had a big display set up where you could go in there and cycle to try it out. It was very entertaining and a great networking for, for our regional partners with VBR. Just want to also let you know that work has begun on the Oak Grove Park behind Oak Grove Elementary School. Looks like they're starting with the, the parking area and then continuing along with the work that is planned. And also just, you know, a plug for our regional airport. I took a flight over this weekend, and it, it was great having the convenience to fly out of Roanoke and come back to Roanoke without having to go elsewhere. It just continued to, I'm impressed with, with the things that our new executive director is doing at the airport and just highly recommend. If you can fly out of Roanoke, you have time, you can reserve the, the flight long enough out there, you'll get good fares. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple things I want to go over. First of all, many in the county may know through the school systems that Mr. North and I go to church with a wonderful lady who passed away last week. She was the principal over at Clearbrook Elementary, Karen Pendleton. You know, she, she was a great asset to our school system. Everybody worked with her, seemed to love her. So anyways, the thing about her, two daughters, her, her husband actually passed away about 11, 12 years ago. So she leaves behind two young daughters. So please keep them in your prayers. Going back to kind of what Mr. North mentioned a moment ago about the tanker trailer, truck that was turned over, there was a lot of debate on this board about having a towing committee, or towing advisory board. I think this illustrates one of the reasons why that was very much needed, because, you know, having those resources readily available that have already been vetted out to come and handle an accident like that, and I think we've had a couple others in the county here in the last little bit, unfortunately, with some heavy-duty trucks, so I'm glad that we did that. If anybody's looked at the news today, inflation is continuing to rear its ugly head. I voiced concern about this before, and I'll voice it again today, that while Roanoke County is in wonderful financial shape, we have great leadership in our finance department. I will raise my concern again, that as we're looking ahead to inflation, that seems to not be letting up, because someone in Washington can't understand basic economics, that you can't have more money chasing the same number of goods, it causes inflation. If you do any history, any work on financial history, many times, prime rate has to get above inflation in order to bring down inflation. The number this morning was 8.3%. I think the prime rate is currently at 5.5. I think we've got a lot of pain ahead of us, and my concern is making sure Roanoke County stays in the great financial shape it's in. I know that in our financial policy, as we look to borrow money, we have a 6% threshold there. You know, I think borrowing in the future may become a challenge, but again, I know we have some wonderful, wonderful people in our finance department, along with our administration, who will keep us well. I think another report that came out yesterday kind of was concerning to me, that housing has only, has taken its steepest dive in 20 years, or something of that magnitude, and being that a large hunk of our, excuse me, home values, a large part of our tax revenue comes from real estate, you know, could pose a problem in the future. But again, as Mr. Mahoney said earlier, I'm not trying to be the pessimist, but I also know, being in the finance work for 25 years, unfortunately, I've seen this come before. And then the last thing, I'm proud to sit here today, and if it was 30 years ago today, I was voted in as a member of the Vinton First Aid Group. And I bring that up, not for me, but for the people that may be watching this, that, you know, if I can do it, anybody can do it. That wasn't meant to be funny, but thanks, Debbie. But truly, it's something I've enjoyed doing. I've enjoyed working alongside of our other police, fire, and rescue. Many of the volunteers that I started working with back in the day are now part of our career staff. One of them was in our audit committee earlier today, but, you know, I just say that to say, I would hope anyone watching this, that, you know, find something to do in your community and give back.
Good work.
Thank you for your 30 years.
Yes, thank you for your service.
It's been fun.
Mr. Chairman, just two items quickly. As alluded to earlier, we recently held the McAfee Knob Trailhead Shuttle ribbon cutting, and it was just really an exciting day because of the use of that parking area there at the trailhead being way over capacity, especially in our peak seasons, and it's such a beautiful area, and it is so popular. I'm very thankful for this opportunity that is grant and user-funded, and it's really going to be helpful, especially as we approach construction for the pedestrian bridge, so I'm very appreciative of that, and thank you to all the people, Paula, thank you, and others who really worked hard to make that happen, and Megan, thank you, you all are wonderful. And then my second point is, on Sunday, I went to a 9/11 remembrance service at Temple Baptist Church this past Sunday, and it's hard to believe that that horrible day was 21 years ago, and may we never forget, may we continue to honor those who have sacrificed all for their country and for fellow citizens. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Two things, I want to echo what Mr. Radford talked about, how last week, on, I think, the September 8th, three of us, Mr. Radford, Ms. Hooker, and I, were able to attend Virginia Blue Ridge's 35th Annual Meeting, and what was very moving to me was the speech of Kristin Armstrong. She was a gold medal, gold medal cycling winner at, was it 2008, 2012, and 2016? It was over three different Olympics. She won gold in that event, and she gave a very moving and, to me, very inspiring speech of the hurdles that she overcame and had to overcome. She and her husband were having a baby, and the Olympic officials were saying, oh, well, you're a woman, and you're having a baby, and you can't compete in the Olympics, which was kind of ridiculous, but she talked about how she had to overcome those different obstacles in order for her to be able to compete for the United States in the Olympics. It was a moving speech. Second item I want to mention is, I believe it was on August 26th, I had the opportunity with my family to attend the 50th Anniversary Celebration of Penn Forest Elementary School. All three of my children, our children, attended Penn Forest. My granddaughter and other grandchildren are attending Penn Forest now. Many of the original principals and other principals and teachers were there from that time, and it was a nice, wonderful celebration. Unfortunately, the weather didn't cooperate. It rained on us, so we all had to go inside, but it was a very nice, very nice event, and it's, Penn Forest was one of those elementary schools that was open classroom. And if you remember back in the day, open classrooms were the thing in education, and for some reason, they don't like open classrooms these days. I guess nothing is permanent in the education establishment. With that, item N, work sessions. Item N1 is a work session to review strategic priorities and work plan with the Board of Supervisors. We will be doing that upstairs on the third floor, so the board will now recess and go to the third floor of the work session. When we adjourn, again, I want to remind everyone that our next meeting is on Wednesday, September 28th. With that, let's go upstairs and do a work session.